Good evening, everyone. I think most of our computers are still on Thanksgiving break, but we'll go ahead and get started. It's five o'clock. At this time, I'll call the Perry City Council Work Session for December the 2nd, 2019 to order. We have a quorum. Item three is Items of Review and Discussion. Item 3A is Department of Leisure Services. And this evening, under 3A1, is a presentation on Generational Values in the Workplace. That'll be an interesting discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Be nice now because I'm the oldest guy in the room.
You will be. Y'all bear with me. I decided to take my whole family out to a cruise this past weekend. I spent four days trapped in a, whatever they call it. I need another vacation. I literally just got off the road. So y'all bear with me. Just a little background. I was fortunate enough to present at our state conference for GRPA. That's Georgia Recreation and Parks Association. And what we found throughout our industry was there's a lot of millennial managers being promoted, and they're having issues navigating a generational value system. So I'm trying to give some best practice to them. All right. Let's just do it. There we go. And what I did, and this will be a shortened version from Mr. Byham Grace, I just gave him my background and experiences, let him know the areas I've been. I worked for the city of Albany, the city of Tallahassee, Macon, Bev County, and Andrew College. So just, I guess qualifying myself to speak on the subject. The topic was a general discussion about, like I said, the general characteristics and the value structures and the impact of young leaders and management. We identified some general characteristics. I called them stereotypes or perceptions with each age group or generation. And we gained an understanding of the most appropriate leadership approaches to foster healthy relationships. So research shows that we currently have five generations in our workforce. I'll focus mainly on three of the generations during this presentation. The average annual rate, annual growth rate of 55 and older is projected to go to be 1.8% more than three times the regular growth. All those statistics are showing that. To sum it all up, our baby boomers are staying later into the workforce. They're not retiring at 55, 65. They're extending their work careers or they're retiring and grabbing another career. So Generation X currently makes up 33% of the workforce. Baby boomers are 25% of our current workforce. The traditional generation, this is from the ages of 19, well, the year, born between the years of 1925 and 1945. They were shaped by the Great Depression and World War II. This is general. Like I said, the only three generations that I will focus heavily on are, one is our baby boomer generation. And generations are shaped by catastrophic or major events throughout that time period. So as you see, we had the moon landing, MLK's assassination, Rosa Parks Civil Rights. Those are some of the major events that happened during this generation's lifetime. Generation X, as you see, it was shaped by dual career, single parent household. This is the latchkey generation, as they say, latchkey kids. The fall of the Berlin Wall, Challenger Disaster, stock market declines, terrorist terrorism during the Munich Olympics. My favorite, Brady Bunch. So I think some of the general characteristics. Generation Y, which technically I am considered a millennial, but this is one of the most influential parts of this generation. This is when the technology boom came, especially in the cellular industry. We're shaped by 9/11, of course, the girls' movement, Oklahoma City bombing, and such. As I mentioned before, these are just stereotypes or perceptions. I don't want to label any generation, one generation, but this is some of the general stereotypes or perceptions that I gathered through my research. So this is where I get feedback. We won't stay on this long, but what are some of the stereotypes about our baby boomers in the workforce? Some value systems that they might have, some values that they might have. Our workers, right?
Right.
They stay long hours. They go in and out. What are some of the negatives? There's no negatives, no negatives, right? So positives, they remain loyal to one organization. This is one group that we see spend 30 years in one job and retire. They have the consistent diligent workers and value organizational power. And some of the negative things, and don't beat me up, see, that's why I quoted Eisenhower in 2005. And so, um...
What does Gen Z know?
They know.
He would ask this week, we're told anyway.
So, Gen Z micro-managers place his work at the center of his members' lives. So very work-driven. So Gen X, what are some stereotypes we think of Gen X? Everybody, kind of be nice. Okay, we'll go into it. Positive things, oh, you're fine. Positive things we think, associate with Generation X. They value their personal and professional lives. They have their work-life balance. They work independently and are very self-sufficient. Now, some of the negative things, of course, it's Strauss and Howells. See, I keep throwing it off on them, they keep a peace. They're cynical and alienated and depressed. I thought that was pretty, that was a terrible perception or stereotype. And they bend the rules to get things done. So that's what research shows. Now, millennial stereotypes, what are some millennial stereotypes? We're always doing this, right?
Best generation.
Best. With job hype. I am totally a failure. Totally a failure. No negatives at all. Just to be fair, positive there, comfortable with change, of course. With job hype, comfortable with change. Extremely technology literate are some things that we're seeing. And negative, I'm just going to skip through the negative part. They're self-centered, narcissistic, ah, that hurts. High expectation, high need of praise, and difficulty with criticism. Now, I did mention these are stereotypes. And this presentation was shaped towards millennials that are currently in management role or aspiring to be managers. So what I wanted everybody to do is to take that in mind in these stereotypes, these perceptions, and shape your approach to your staff as we see are very diverse nowadays. Millennial leadership, these are some of the top qualities they say that we have as leaders. First, tech savvy, we hunger for success, innovation, flexible, constantly seek inspiration. So if you notice, a lot of these qualities sound a lot like the negatives, but shifted. Yes, sounds great, but how do we make this all work together? If y'all don't know, this is the Power Rangers. It's got some millennial magic at its heart, right? How do we all make this work? As millennial managers, what I'm encouraging my fellow professionals to do is assess how your stereotypes shape your views or color your views. You come in, you think, oh, he's a baby boomer, I can't send him an email, he's not going to check. You know, those are true perceptions, those are true stereotypes. Bias is kind of like that training that chief provides with the bias that you come into a situation with. So that's one of the tips. Be introspective. Challenge these stereotypes. Be the difference. I have a great example in my office. It's a 74-year-old young man that will send an email, a text message, and he has a Facebook account. He must say, I'll nail this. He can go with the best of it. So we have to be introspective, we can't just dwell on our differences. One of the best ways, one of the tips for, I guess, millennial managers, managers as a whole, is listen with an open mind. You gotta go into situations open-minded. If you saw the title, it's millennial management, I'm old enough to be yours. You know, you're the boss, but there's, you know, there's people that have done this for 30-plus years, 20-plus years. They've seen it, they've seen it. So come in there with open ears. You got two ears and one mouth. That's what we've been taught all of our lives. So listen with an open mind, find the commonalities instead of the differences in the stereotypes. Just like we shifted them earlier from negative to positive. Humility, this is one of the biggest things. And I use the example from Vietnam. My uncle was telling me from Vietnam, he said that he lost a lot of lieutenants, butter bars, as they call them, in Vietnam. But they came straight out of college, and I knew this, and I knew that. And you didn't listen to your NCOs, you didn't listen to the boots on the ground. And they didn't last long. You get what I'm saying? So that's the same, same kind of formula that you need in leadership in our workforce. You don't know everything. There's a reason I've been in this field for 20 years. Let me sprinkle some wisdom on it. So humility, know that you don't know everything. Now, I did touch on motivational leadership, several leadership principles. But servant leadership is where I chucked it down, and this is my favorite leadership style. It goes back to Confucianism, they dated back then, but there's a book, I think it's got 66 books in it. And there was a young man that exemplified servant leadership. And it's to serve first. We are public service. So that word is constantly in play in our line of work. And service does not, I guess the first step is the internal customer service. That's how you serve your colleagues, or your subordinates, or your coworkers. Servant leadership, that's what we do every day. Now, I did give you the short version because I learned from Mr. Byham Grace, but if there are any questions or comments right now, I would love to answer them. I guess I got a good head nod from Mr. Gilmore, so I think we're all right.
Thank you, thank you. That was a good thing that you brought forward today.
Thank you.
I think I'm a senior person here, and I have to speak for myself, other than nobody else, but it's good that you're able to, I call them young bloods, you know what I mean? We gotta learn how to appreciate the young blood and bring them in because, like you said, they're tech savvy. They know about their computer, they know what to go through and find what they're looking for. It might take me an hour or two for I can get where I want to go, but I'll get there. Thank you so much.
Good job and a timely purpose.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the information.
See, the only other thing, particularly the deal about having to have praise and all that type of stuff. At least from my perspective, that's a real issue. You know, and what concerns me more is, in this global world, the rest of the world's not hung up on this. Feel praise and all that type of stuff. And that causes problems when you get into competition and all that kind of stuff.
So how does the presentation that I'm losing, we're asking you, how did your presentation go at the GRPA?
From the feedback I got, it went pretty well. They asked me to present on a national level. Of course, the extended version, so I had to...
Look, that's the immediate feedback.
They're giving you praise.
Thank you.
That's right.
Oh, my Lord. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you bringing that forward. Thank you for representing the city of Perry with that.
Thank you. You don't need to shout, will you?
Thank you very much. Item 3B is Department of Economic Development. 3B1 is the Downtown Development Authority's whole relocation project. Ms. Harden?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time tonight. We have several presenting this evening for our whole relocation project downtown. And I'd first like to introduce you to Meredith Lockerman. She'll be showcasing three slides. And she's a property owner downtown at 902 904 Commerce Street. This is a picture of the apartment lot and the new Crown Road. It's right there, if you look to the right, that's Gilbert's Park, and then to the left is Res Care. Right there on Commerce Street, so two parks on the side, and then that before. So we have some plans that we are working on to build a two-story building there. We want to stay true to the facade and the way Perry looks and kind of the old look to the buildings and make it look like it's been there a long time and that's going to be a brand-new building. But downstairs, we're hoping for a restaurant and bar. And upstairs, a little bit of small, but three loft apartments that will be used for either long-term or short-term living. Right there on Long Res Care, the plan right now is to leave an eight-to-10-foot alley there just to help out with walkability, especially with that downtown, that kind of thing, just walkability in general. This is a picture of kind of what we envisioned that it would look like, you know, with patio tables here, the restaurant back behind, and then the lofts up front. We'll put up a couple of patio areas at the top, but that was the best picture we could come up with. To kind of show you what we had envisioned. We don't have the final numbers yet, I sure would like to have them, but we're expecting this, it's going to be somewhere around $650,000 for the building project. And then the restaurant itself, if the numbers are right, we're going to have about $30,000 in revenue, which projects at $56,000 in sales taxes. One big draw was that there are a lot of vehicles on our street. Another big draw is all the parking that we have in downtown Perry. So we're going to win for a restaurant and the need for restaurants around. My background is in real estate and Airbnb, so this is kind of mine, the make of the woods right here. We're going to pay more than that in property taxes, but I think the city's allocation of the property taxes, we're going to pay as many around $3,600, which is obviously a lot more than it was before when it was owned by the city itself really developed, I believe. We're going to have some Airbnb units upstairs, that's something I have a lot of experience with. And so I've done a lot of number crunching trying to figure out where that's going to be, but we estimate that that sales tax and city tax will be around $9,000, includes lodging tax as well. And then we're also hoping that this will start some additional investment around downtown. I'm already seeing a whole bunch, I'm excited about what's happening downtown. And hoping this will disperse some of that when everyone starts seeing things going on and start getting curious about what will be part of it. That's what we're doing. Thank you. So back to this, so we have a pole right there in front of the property, and it needs to be moved so that Meredith can build her two-story infill development. So we have Georgia Power here tonight. We've worked with them on options. And we're presenting Plan C option, that we feel is cost-efficient. And Scott Cox will be presenting this, since he's the expert in just this.
We're here, I'm an expert. I'm a baby boomer. And as baby boomers, if you're not getting any feedback at all, you are the bomb, just so you know that. If we're giving you feedback, then you're in trouble. Right, okay. Anyway, so what we want to talk about, the main goal here is to remove the lines that are crossing this property. That's really more than just moving this pole. I know we said pole relocation, but the main goal here is to move or get rid of those lines that are going to cross that property. By electrical code, right now, you can't build something underneath those lines. We wouldn't be able to maintain them. Plus, you'd have safety issues, right? With all the electrical lines going over there. So there's a combination of things on that pole. You see towards the top up there, where the insulators are, I don't know if I can get a... I see that's moving all around, you know? At the top up there.
Pointer at the top.
Okay.
Green dog.
Green dog, okay, so we'll see. So right here at the top, right here, those are actually power lines, energized lines. This line here is a guide wire that actually holds that pole from trying to fall over that direction. And so what we want to do is remove those. But towards the bottom of there, we also have a bunch of data cables. And I don't know if all of them are live or not, but I think they just kept adding them to the pole, right? So we gotta get those cleaned up. And then ultimately, you don't want to have that pole in front of the restaurant. So we do want to move that out of the way so it's not right there in the front door and make it a little bit more attractive. So that's kind of the main goal. So how are we going to do that? Well, our first kind of thought was, is we put everything underground. Right? Great idea. Problem is, it's very expensive, right? So we came up with some different alternatives. Plan C seems to be the most economical and actually gets you further down the road if you ever want to go underground in the future, okay? So just imagine now, we've taken all of these lines down to this pole back here. That's the goal. We gotta get power to the pole that's in the alleyway back there. And it kind of looks like an octopus. See all the lines coming off of there? Those are all customers that are being fed by Georgia Power in their back alley. We gotta keep everybody on, right? So how do we get power to there? Well, first of all, we want to remove that pole, okay? And that removes all those lines going to the octopus. And that's what your property begins to look like. Our thought process is, we're not going to put the pole right up against the Res Care there, but what we'll do is actually bring it down to the east of Res Care, down here towards the public parking. That's where the new pole will go, is right there. So as you're looking at the parking lot, the infill portion of the restaurant, that's what you're going to be looking at at this point, okay? Now, you notice also that we got rid of the power lines that were coming into the site right here. We've actually moved those back. We've taken them back to about Ball Street in front of there, because you're going to have a second-story building. And so if you've got somebody in an Airbnb, they can open a window, or they're at a bar, and they can reach up and grab an energized line, again, safety issue, right? So luckily, if you look back at this picture, this is what we call a dead-end structure. This is where the line actually terminates, just to go to this pole in the back. So by eliminating that, we'll just move the energized lines back towards Ball Street, so that'll help. The one thing that will remain is what we call a guide wire, which is right back here. So let me take a little bit of what a guide wire does, so you understand that. So here we have these two poles, and we have a power line in between. And you can imagine the power line has weight to it and it has tension to it. So if I sag the line, that's called sagging line, as if the wind blows and things like that, the line begins to kind of swing, if you will. So what we do to keep that swing from being so big is we begin to put tension in it. And it begins to be a smaller and smaller swing. So there's a lot of tension in this line. And what happens is, when you have tension, you can see how much stress there is against our pole. So what we have to do is actually put guide wire, which eventually go to ground, hold the power lines, so that they're in equilibrium, right? Same pressures. So now it's not, those poles aren't trying to collapse and top of each other. So those guide wires, this guide wire actually is attached to other poles down the line, and they do the same thing, and eventually, when the power line ends or begins, you put a guide wire. The other place it does it is when you change directions, okay? So I think another look here, this is actually a guide structure on the other side of the street, by the Walgreens. That guide structure is actually keeping the lines, when they go to the back here, that also puts pressure on the power lines. So we have a guide wire that goes across the street to another pole, and here's the guide wire going into the ground right here, okay? So what we'll end up doing is actually making that disappear, because that's gone. So it's another structure that we're going to get rid of in the view, okay? All right, so let's go down the street a little bit. So here's Res Care, right here, as it is now, right? You see our pole over here? This is what it'll look like going forward, is we'll actually move that pole. Remember, we moved that pole, it was right here, we're going to move it closer to the parking lot. And then we're going to actually have another pole to the back. And this is how we're going to get our data inside to the pole in the back. This is where cable's coming in. And there'll still be an overhead line, that's what these are. These are the dabble lines that are coming across. And here's our guide wire coming across the top, right? So data will be above ground, and you can see them right there, going back and forth, okay? Now, you'll notice that I didn't put a guide wire going this direction, right? I remember I said, you've got to have guys on poles the direction that they're going. And the reason for that is there's not a lot of weight with cable. And cable is the only thing that's going on those poles. And the reason for that is, we're actually going to go underground with the energized portion of Georgia Power. So we're going to come here, here's that pole that we're just looking at. There's a pole over here. We're going to put another pole right next to it, and we're going to do underground to a tree area. There's a tree there now, we're going to have to remove the tree. And then we'll come up out of the ground from underground, and we'll actually drape the power from this pole to the existing pole that's right here. Now, because of this distance, we won't have to do any guide wiring in here because it's a short distance. So you don't have the same pressures that we have the other way. So there's no guiding in here, so you won't have any guys in your current parking lot. But because we're not putting energized components here, I don't have to put a guide pole over here, and I don't have to put one down here, because that is too long. You'd have to put some kind of guiding in that spot. So that's why we went to the underground solution, as opposed to just coming in overhead with that. So once it goes in underground, going underground right here, we'll actually put another pole in here. There's one here, there'll be two of them next to each other. We'll go underground, come up out of the ground into this pole that'll be right here where this tree is. And then that'll go into the existing pole, and we won't have to change any service drops that are currently there, which was a big portion of the cost of going underground with that. So that cleans up a lot of things in that streetscape. We had one pole in front of it, we're able to do two-story and not cause a problem there. And so I think it solves a lot of problems.
Scott, if you could maybe, this next one is the tree, if you want to just talk about that.
That's right.
And the bottom one is where we could put a tree that we looked at.
Okay, so this tree here is the one we're going to have to remove, because we'll put a pole somewhere out here on the sidewalk. And we're going to put our pole right where this tree is, right there. It is a city tree, right there.
That's great.
So that island is city-maintained, if you will. So we'll need easements coming from here back to that pole back here, an easement, right-of-way easement, as well as a data easement, kind of come over the top over here. But this is where we'll put our pole, we'll remove this. And Brian has told us that we can put a tree in this island, correct, Mr. Brian?
Yes.
So we'll put a tree here, we'll replace that. And then we'll also put some shrubbery around here to kind of beautify that piece of it. And then the lines from there will just go on over to the inside pole in the inside of the alley.
Right, thank you.
One other thing, I think, there's a project to do some paving, the Chad's doing, and there's a pole inside that we've got to move temporarily and maybe put it back to where it was. And so the cost that we have in there includes that change as well. So, okay.
You can tell us how much that was going to cost?
Yeah, that's coming next. Now, we have Dylan Gerald, our vice chairman at our Downtown Development Authority, and she's heard the president the last couple of slides.
Mayor and Council, thank you for indulging us tonight as we go through. What we think is for DDA is our first real launch into doing something that we were mandated to do as a DDA, which was to bring some new development into downtown, to encourage and incubate new property owners who want to come to downtown and develop. Because in the long run, if you look at the long game, that benefits everybody, both the citizenry of Perry, the infrastructure of the city itself, and then just the long-term viability of our wonderful town. This is home for me, and it's, hopefully will be, long-term home for my children. And, you know, just that any advancements that we're making as a downtown does nothing more than enhance all of our lives. I'm lucky enough to, as a baby boomer, I'm on my second career. I think that was mentioned in there. And actually, maybe even a third career, but in my second career, I do buy and sell real estate for Colton Banker in the area. And it's so wonderful to hear people wanting to move, that are relocating with the base, are coming into the area, they want to be in Perry. They love the way it looks, they love the feel, they love the environment. They love the way it looks, they love the feel, they love the environment. So anything that DDA does from this point forward is going to enhance that, and it's gonna help Perry move forward. And, and again, that was y'all's mandate to us, and we're really excited that we've got this project to start with. Um, so, um, we've been very fortunate that Scott and Georgia Power, they did a lot of thinking outside of the box to help us get from that, what would have been the original cost, and seems like the obvious answer, but boy, was it expensive. Um, gave us a Plan B that sort of tailored that a little bit more. And now we've come to Plan C that Scott just presented to all of you on what's gonna happen. So we've got the, the fifty thousand dollars, um, that it's, that going to be the cost for Georgia Power to work its magic. Then Hard Gray and Cox are both going to have some expenses that are gonna go along with redoing the data wires. And I've now told you what I know, because that's, I know they know what they're doing. Um, for Hard Gray to move its wires is going to be ten thousand, that's their estimates. Um, for Cox, another three thousand, for a total of sixty-three thousand. So the fact that we were starting at two thou, two hundred thousand plus, when all of this started its, its plan, we've come down quite a bit. And it's just because people have been thinking outside the box and really trying to make this work and affordable for the city. So what is DDA asking for? Well, we would like for Mayor Council to approve us to use fifty thousand dollars from the earmarked restricted funds that are earmarked for DDA and downtown development. Um, that fund was established in 2013. And so we've got those restricted funds, but we have to have Mayor Council's approval for that. So that, we're asking for that. The remainder of the pole relocation funds are going to be paid with our unrestricted funds. Um, uh, some of that is coming from the sale of the parking lot that you've seen now what the, what is envisioned to be. So the question you may have is, well, why aren't you gonna put all of the proceeds from the sale towards this project? Well, part of what DDA does, and those of you who've traveled the state and have, um, talked to other DDAs, they have, for lack of a better word, endowments. They have pots of money that they can use to help encourage business owners to either make improvements to what they've got, or you can use it to help other, um, to help new property owners, new business ventures, new entrepreneurs coming into an area. And so what we would like to do is take some of the money from the sale of the lot that we've closed on, and hold that back so that we can offer other businesses incentives and ways to be able to do all the things that you guys have asked us to do. There's not any one particular thing that we have envisioned for that, but we want to be able to have that money accessible to us if it's requested. And if, so that we can say yes, rather than I'm sorry, we're tapped out. Um, this is a wonderful project, and we want it to be a start. And we want it to be a great project, because the city of Perry, the people in the, in the city, they're gonna be looking to this to see if it's gonna fly. And if we do it right, as I think that we are, and I think that Meredith's got a wonderful addition to a mix of businesses downtown, this could, it's kind of, um, I was talking to the mayor today when I didn't think that I was gonna be able to be here. I said, "It's almost biblical, you know, you get one thing and it begat something else, and it begets something else." So we're hoping that this'll be sort of an ignition. We've got lots of cool stuff going on and a great reputation, and I think we should build on that. Um, and the third thing that is, the, the third bullet point that's up there is that there is a rebate that Georgia Power provides, um, from users on a, on a yearly basis. And what DDA is asking to go in addition to the, um, the funds that are left over from the sale of the property, is that we are able to access or have access to those, that Georgia Power rebate for the, that would only be for the, the, uh, the new...
Load.
Load, thank you. I couldn't guess it yet. The new load that is going to be, that's gonna come online via our new business with Ms. Lockums. So that's the third, the third bullet point there. Are there any questions about this?
The council's what questions you have.
Lou, you got a quick question on the unrestricted funds. Are those the funds that came from the sale over there at the Walgreens? Is that what?
The restricted account?
Yes. So the purpose of that is to develop downtown?
Downtown capital improvement.
Capital improvement, okay. So this would fit into that as a downtown capital improvement, okay? So it's really your money, you're asking us to approve you using it to, to move forward with this restaurant construction.
And the other plus, and Chadman can speak to this as well, is, and, and Scott's already alluded to it, is that the way this has all worked out, and the timing of the alleyway project and this project, is that we're going to be able to have some of those costs shared, to a certain extent. Cause some of the things that will happen with the DDA project are going to not have to be paid for by the city with the alleyway project, cause it's all gonna be, it's gonna be covered at one time. The, the pole moving, not removal, but the pole moving downtown, when they're gonna have to do, that they're gonna have to do for the alleyway project, as I understand it, am I saying it right?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not quite two birds with one stone, but it's getting close.
What, um, let's play devil's advocate. Let's say we do vote on this, all this happens, and then she, she sells it. I would assume with a nice profit.
The lot, you mean?
Yeah, if all the wires are gone.
Well, in the, one of the things that was taken care of in the sales contract and in the closing, um, was that she is buying this for the purpose of building it, not to turn and flip the lot. So there will be the infield development, and that's been taken care of from the contractual standpoint.
What, what, I don't understand, what, what do you mean by, like, she is, she is bound to build?
Yes, yes, she is bound to build. And it's all gonna, and there are timelines that are laid out in the contract for her to start, but none of it starts until the pole has been relocated.
Under the contract, as I understand it, you have a buyback agreement.
That's correct. So if she decides she doesn't want to build, then we've got the, the ability to buy the property back.
Comes back to the DDA.
Or she does build, and then sell.
But I guess if she builds a building and sells it, that's...
I'm just saying she's...
It's gonna be a rescue.
We'll see three thousand dollars plus for her. You know, it's like the city of Perry is taking care of, or whoever is taking care of this big pole to be moved.
Let me, let me approach it two ways. First, from a real estate standpoint, that property is not being used to its highest and best value. It's, it is not being, it's not being used as it should be. It will, unless the pole is moved, it will remain a parking lot for its, the rest of its life. And it's basically unmarketable at, for any of, for anything else. So the city kinda has to think about, well, do you, do you want that parking lot, save that parking lot? Or do you wanna do something that's gonna encourage it? So let's say we move the pole, and Meredith builds her building. We will have a restaurant structure downstairs, and the loft structures upstairs. If she were to sell that to someone else, someone's gonna come in and do a restaurant, and they're still gonna have the lofts. Or if they create a different business downstairs, you're still gonna have something that's gonna be bringing in proceeds to the city via the property taxes. Cause as long as it's owned by a city government entity, that it's not generating any property taxes, as it is. Does that answer your question? It would be no different from anybody else selling a business downtown to become something else.
Well, just standing way back from it, if we, if we'd have moved the pole and all the wiring before we sold it, could you have asked more money for the loft in the city of Perry being?
Whether it would have praised, whether it would have appraised for more, is not something you could say yes or no it would, but I'll tell you this. My thought was, and, and I think all of, and I've expressed it in DDA meetings, and I think we were all on the same page with this, is that we could have come to you guys prior to selling the property and saying, "We need the funds to move this pole, because we might be able to sell this property." No guarantees or anything. Now we've sold the property, we have an infield development that is well underway. We've got plans, we've got something that's gonna show, we've got something to show for it. And we've got something to ask for that's concrete. Does that make a big, does that make a difference? There's no way to say, "Oh yeah, if we had moved the pole, we could have asked five thousand dollars more, ten thousand dollars for the lot." We might could have, finding a willing able buyer to do that, it may or may not have happened. We were just very fortunate that Meredith wanted to come in.
If I'm understanding it correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say, worst case, we do have to buy back the lot. At that point, it would still, the pole is now moved, so it's more marketable. And we could perhaps, in that scenario, get more service for it then, if it comes to that scenario. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. And we haven't agreed on the sales price as well, in the contract, if we buy that.
The contract still predicts either scenario.
That's correct, that's correct. DDA is not in a, is not in a poor position either way.
How long will the project take if we, if City Council knows, or what?
What were we saying? If we could pull the trigger tomorrow, were we saying sixty days?
I think we were, we were kinda saying in that, that March timeframe, it would be complete. We have to, we, we would invoice the city, the city pays the thing, we start the process at that point, and then, um, we're, we're looking at that March, springtime completion.
Mr. Mark, is there any complications with them boring under our driveway there?
Um, I don't really know. Some of y'all may remember that there was a lot of underground conduit and wire put in there when that parking lot was done, cause originally it was supposed to be an exhibit.
As I remember though, you have to go back and check records, all of that conduit is down the middle, down that middle walkway with the trees in it, with the idea that we could, eventually if we wanted to light it up, put streetlights down that walkway.
And we'll be conservably lower than a lot of that. I mean, it's, there's codes to that, where those, those things need to be, and where we need to be. And we're usually pretty deep. It'll be the stuff that was put in there a hundred years ago that's not documented.
Yeah. I hope we dug most of that up. Hope you got something to go into it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Number one, going back on your Plan C aerial, did I understand you correctly to say that where you're starting and coming down on the boring, you're gonna put another pole in there?
Yes.
Why, why does it have to be two poles right at the same location?
Okay, so when you, when you put an underground cable on top of it, it's fairly large cable, and so you can't put it on that, that pole, cause it's already stressed as a, as a primary pole. So we'll put one right next to it, we'll drape the, the power to those poles, that pole there, and then we'll be able to hang those cables on, cause they're fairly heavy cables. And now what it'll do is stress that cable, so we can have two of those.
We could have put in a new wire control one pole? Or at least let me get back, I'd like you to check to see.
I will do that, I will check.
You know, I think it's excellent about removing some of the poles, but going and having two of them, you'll rake downtown, I don't know. Yeah, uh, second thing.
It, it would end up being a bigger pole, cause that'd be engineered, et cetera, yeah. So that, that is another.
Still, one pole is potentially better than two. Second thing, how do we know for sure Windstream is not gonna be charging anything about the relocations?
Um, they...
They were in the meeting.
They came to our meetings, and they said that they look at it as just a relocation, and there's no cost associated with that.
Okay. Going back on your boring, does that include the asphalt replacement, the brick replacement, all that type of stuff? Or is that just Georgia Power's cost to put that in?
It's pre-Georgia Power's cost to do that, um, and I'll double check on those numbers, but I know that, uh, that if, if, there was gonna have to be some replacement there, but it's gonna be directional boring, so it's not something where we're coming in with big rigs and, you know. It's, we do it a lot in, in city skates like that, so I don't think it would be a huge cost to that.
Asphalt replacement, are you thinking about?
Well, not, well, depending on what happens or what they find going back there. But you've got a parking lot there, you've got that brick sidewalk work there, and all by the pole. You see what I mean about where the lines go?
So, so we would enter in, and so we'd have to replace whatever was there. And then we typically would replace whatever we, we did damage there, that's part of what we do. We wouldn't just leave it.
But you're not gonna go and cut. No, you just bore it.
Yeah, it's gonna be directional boards.
I can make sure.
It's a directional board.
Remember we just went back talking about, you don't know for sure what's in there.
Which would be another fear of getting in there and the, the cost doubling on what I'm...
Right.
And, and, I mean, it obviously depend on how far down you go and all that type of stuff, but you may have some other potential water line, serving lines and all that type, cause, I don't know, I mean, y'all were here, we did that lot construction in there, but there's a lot of stuff that got discovered. Last question is, finding Andy at the sixty-two or sixty-three thousand, what if the costs run over that? Is DDA picking up whatever the cost overrun would be?
The short answer is, we'd have to, we would have to agree to do that as a board. We'd have to discuss it and, and decide that that's what we wanna do, because it would mean pulling funds from something that we wanted, some more funds from the sale. So I can't speak to that specifically tonight, but it would definitely be something that we could reconsider.
I'll add to that, initially when the, we were looking at Option A, that was two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars on the high end, um, the DDA board did vote to, um, dedicate all forty thousand dollars in the settled property to the pole removal project. Um, but the second thing is, when we did get these cost estimates from Georgia Power, as well as the communications and utility partners, they did tell us that these were the highest possible numbers. So the ten thousand dollar number, um, that you see on there, he said that would be the highest. It could, it's probably gonna come in lower, but they gave us their high numbers. Uh, Georgia Power said it might be as low as thirty-five thousand, but it took away and it was fifty. Um, so we feel pretty confident that we don't see it doubling, and if anything, it would be lower than this. Um, as well as it is tied, fewer the alley pole relocation costs are built in, and that's a few thousand dollars as well, um, that the city will have to pay for when they do the stormwater project that Chad's working on.
The other advantage of having that underground, that piece, you're one step closer to going underground. You wanna pay that piece, so there's additional, there's additional benefits if you wanna go to that.
Is this, last one, is this contract gonna be with DDA?
Um, we typically will build the city, I think, I don't know that...
It's city property, it's gonna be affected.
Right, I don't know, I don't know how that would work.
How do the interworkings of, of the city financing work with something with you, when you have authorities that are, that are also involved? I just don't know how that works.
Well, number one, as far as I know, there's nothing that prohibits the DDA from contracting with Georgia Power to do this project. Okay. Uh, and I think it's a good project, you don't get me wrong, okay? But if it's contracted with the city and something happens, the city's on the hook for it. And it is, at least as it's envisioned here, it's a DDA type of project, not, not a city project. There's a portion that they're asking the city to okay on, but that's a lot different than doing a contract. Uh, the second thing is, is that I think it would be advantageous for DDA, assuming there's no legal prohibitions, about contracting it anyway, just so they get that experience of being out there and dealing with that type of stuff. You know, you talk about future things you want to do, you know, I think this would be a, a good idea.
We, we don't mind whichever one wants to contract with us. Like I said, we, we typically work with the city, so that's where we're headed.
And it would just, it would, it would just take some working out as far as, um, the city property that would be affected by it and handling it.
We would just have to provide an easement. The city's gonna have to provide an easement, am I not quite mistaken? We're gonna have to provide an easement for them to go that way anyway.
The city will need to provide an easement to Georgia Power, I guess.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to do that part of it. But as far as the contract being with you guys, I... But as far as the contract being with you guys, I don't see that as a problem whatsoever. But unless Miss Newby tells me I misspoke. But what precautions will you guys, all of you, look at everybody, to ensure there's nothing there, the best of our knowledge?
Typically, the city requires, we would require a locate, of course, anytime you did, you get a locate. Our locator would, of course, visit the site. He would mark any underground utilities that he's aware of or he can find. Um, of course, we'll check old records, old plans where we did the parking lot construction, to see where the conduits were placed for future lighting expansions. But we'll be able to mark them probably as close as we can. Uh, like Scott mentioned, the things that are underground that may be before, prior to this construction, we just don't know about. Um, a boring rig that he's going to be using is relatively not invasive. You know, it's small, I think a four inch diameter hole. Uh, they can pretty much control where it goes, where it comes up. It's not like a jack and bore type of pit that you would for a water line or something like that. So it's not near as intrusive in that manner, relatively simple operation. But there is a chance, and always a chance, you could hit a utility.
And who pays for it?
If that, uh, if they've got a good locate, then we've done everything we're supposed to do to get done. Then it's a, the insurance or whoever gets, gets that.
It would be only the company doing it really, whether it's an outsourced contractor or Georgia Power in that case.
But they'll look at their, their day ticket and say, you didn't locate it for me. Of course, they're, they're, they're used to doing this. It's not like we hired someone that just started this weekend doing it, you know. Um, so can't guarantee completely, never can.
Right. So. One other question. It's a very interesting project. We need to make sure that we understand it completely, because you're going to release fifty thousand dollars to them involved with it. If you elect to do it.
Can I say one more thing?
Fifty, fifty thousand, eighty-five thousand, whichever you say, belongs to them anyway.
It's in their restricted account and we have to approve releasing.
We have to approve it, it's their money.
Their money, yes.
And are y'all willing to do this?
You, you look at the tax income off of it, whereas we're getting nothing now. And fairly short order it pays for itself. Agree?
And may I say one closing thing? Um, just listening.
You have more than one.
I usually do, I, I try to start with one. From all accounts, Black Friday and, um, and Small Business Saturday was amazing in Perry. There's a lot of enthusiasm. You've seen it with food truck Fridays that come in and a number of people that embrace Perry and embrace a Friday night in the middle of July to come down and stand in line for, for food. And how much they, they keep coming back and they enjoy it and they're amazed at what Perry has to offer. I, I think this is, the idea that Perry can do something and be so enthusiastic about making it available to, to those that want to come into our, our town and do things for us. It's, it, to me, it's, it's so much more than it ever was when I was growing up here. You know, the, the idea that we want to progress and that we want to stay relevant is something that I know all the DDA board wants to see happen and do everything within our power to do it. So we, we do hope that you will, that you will approve the things that we have asked for. And we, in all good faith, will promise to do the best we can to, to make a good representation for the city. Thank you.
I remind everybody that we challenged this DDA board when we established the new board last year to go find innovative ways to grow our downtown. And I've heard frustrations on all of our parks that we can't get some, something new built. But we've witnessed over the last four or five years, as we have built new things, new things were built. Our new businesses were opened. So that's those, that's generating a whole lot of interest. And I just think, you know, they've gone out and established a way of making this happen for someone to come in and invest. I don't know, what's, what's your investment going to be, six hundred and?
Oh, it'll be closer to seven hundred.
Seven hundred thousand dollars in our community. So I'd like to, for every one of you, take that in mind. Any questions or thoughts as we move forward on this? Does everybody here have all the information that they need to make an informed decision tomorrow night? And I assume this will be on, for vote tomorrow night to release the fifty thousand dollars.
If you all concur to proceed.
That's the only thing we're voting on, is that releasing the fifty.
Well, I mean, you also have the easement, some of that time.
But we typically provide power usage anyway, so we're good. Any questions or concerns? And this will be on our agenda tomorrow night. Thank you very much. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into this. And we'll look forward to voting on this tomorrow night. Looks really, it's outstanding, right? Item three C is the office of the city manager, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Since I am a old boomer, in a technical skill, there will be no PowerPoint. Uh, in your packet is a memo from me talking about the Fairgrounds Authority talk has been looking at, and I hope everyone's familiar with this, about getting an onsite hotel out their location. And council may remember that this project, while it is going through the state, has been one of the major projects that the city has supported because of the spinoffs of having that. Particularly with the primary function of getting more heads in the beds, as the convention folks say, during the week, instead of during the weekend, by able to bring in all these different conferences, so on and so forth. Uh, one of the councils already agreed to, for this particular project, about some of the standard incentives, you know, like the building permits and those type of things. Uh, but did want to point out one other possible proposal, which would be giving some type of property schedule relief. And that's on the attached exhibit in your packet. So for example, if the cost of the project is fourteen million, the assessed value will be five point six million. City property tax would be seventy thousand, six fifty. Uh, and then you see a schedule which is similar, for example, to what the Development Authority offered to the Guardian Center and some of these other developments, which in essence would be a ten-year rebate on the taxes. Uh, had, it's hard to check to see about what options we would have with that. There are a number, but they can be complicated, involve debt, which we're not interested in doing or any of that type of stuff. So you might want to consider as another incentive for this, about we would just refund back to them the city tax portion. You, at least as far as I know, you'll have the authority to do that. Uh, of course, it would be subject to city attorneys.
Yeah, it would have to be structured in some type of adware, property tax abatement, possibly with the sale leaseback or something like that, um, to be able to actually refund the adware taxes. But we can work on how it needs to be structured to be important from Georgia law.
So that gives you some example of what the tax would be off for each year. Everybody been on there? Uh, so by the time you got down to year ten, or actually year eleven, maybe you had a hundred percent of their tax. In addition to that, this would only be whatever the initial tax was. So any additional tax that resulted from the increase in the value of the property, or if you were to increase the building rate and ceiling, all that type of stuff, they would have to pay, you know, a hundred percent of whatever that would be. Uh, so just bringing this up to you as something you may want to think over. There's no particular need, at least as far as I know, um, to be ready to go. It's nothing that you need to do. But like I said, this is one of the major projects that, that we have talked about. One of the other things you may also remember that comes up particularly when the Fairgrounds has to go see the General Assembly is what type of support, you know, does the city provide for Fairgrounds, for projects and that type of stuff? So. No decision or anything is required now, just let you think about that.
Then you can structure, you could, you could structure a rebate of starting at fifty percent of their tax.
Yes.
And work it over a ten-year period that diminishes, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent. Is that correct?
That's right, and possibly to address, I don't, I don't think we could, if we're not, say attorneys issuing everything, we may wind up having a deal where fifty percent or whatever, but the revenues come from someplace else other than the property tax income.
We'll have to research this issue and get back to Mayor and Council on what is allowed under Georgia law that can be structured to allow a type of adware abatement.
Okay, that's fair enough.
But like I say, you don't have to make the suggestion, but unless you just actually say no, uh, you may want to say, well, we have no objections. For example, I follow up on Brooks' point, where the city attorney just checks to see what the actual options are. So then you'd be aware of those possibilities for that. The other thing I think that's important with this, and not that we'll be doing it for every project, I want to emphasize that, but you may have some other type of projects. I'm not saying another hotel, but some other type of project that would be coming in that you may consider this to be viable and then you already have the knowledge and the format about what you want to do.
And we are not going to the county or the school board to ask them to abate.
No.
This is only the city taxes that would be abated. The stormwater utility.
Refunded.
Refunded.
Yeah, they're still, they're still going to have to pay underneath this concept, okay? They get their tax bill, they pay their tax bill. See what I mean?
Right.
And then based on, on whatever the city attorney says the format is, you all as a city rebate back to them whatever it would be on, on the form. So there isn't anyone, want to emphasize, there isn't anyone getting out and not paying their property taxes.
Right, it's just, it's an incentive that we'll be willing to pay for them to invest fourteen million dollars up there.
That's right.
To build more of a convention center concept out there at the Fairgrounds and supporting the Fairgrounds.
Correct.
They would still pay the stormwater utility fees, they would still pay fire fees.
They pay the hotel, motel tax, they pay all that type of stuff.
This is just only addressing the city tax structure as it is.
Did they ask for, wasn't there a previous hotel that we worked with out there, the Dale Belt Road?
Yes.
Was, were we going to do the same thing with that?
No, it, it had never gotten that far.
Had that one.
Right. The only thing that, Mr. Albert, that had been talked about before was what council previously agreed to for that project, which was waiving some of the building permit fees and some of that type. And that's still in effect right now.
Right.
So this is pretty close, you think?
I like to say it's pretty good.
Pretty close?
Yes, I'm not pulling one out of the sky.
Remind me how long this tax would be available to them, refund?
Uh, ten years.
Ten years, okay.
Now, you could, you could make it five.
But every year it reduces ten percent. It reduces ten percent every year and so up until ten years.
Right.
And they'd be paying a hundred percent in the ten years, eleven years.
Right, and well, yeah, and actually every single year they'd be paying a hundred percent. You'd just be rebating it less and less as each year goes forward.
Each year, goodbye. And like I said, like Lee pointed out, you can make it for five years. You know, you know, this is just a, an idea that if you want to ask Miss Newby to go and research it, that's all that's being asked for tonight. And how, how do we legally do it if we, if we choose to do it? What other questions do you have? Miss Newby's here to give you as much opinion as she has tonight, if you have questions. So do we have concurrence to ask Miss Newby to move forward and research it and bring back any information to the council?
Yes.
Do you have concurrence? Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, for bringing that forward to us. Item four is other business, excuse me, other business supplemental agenda. And four A is Houston Springs Pebble Beach Drive Stormwater Repairs. Mr. McMurran?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, in your packets, you have a short memo of about Pebble, Pebble Beach Drive, that's Houston Springs. We are responsible for some of the utilities out there. It is a private subdivision. However, stormwater, water and sewer are our responsibility. Um, I have been approached that there is a sinkhole out there in the areas causing some problems. We did some staff investigation and we found that the bottom of a steel pipe is starting to deteriorate. In other words, it's just rusting out linear wise along the very bottom of the pipe. Um, you cannot see all the pipe because it has a lot of sand and debris down the bottom of it. Um, what we were able to expect, we concluded that the entire pipe was starting to fail. So there are options. In your packet, the first option is an estimate to replace the concrete pipe. I contacted Georgia Water Environmental Services, who's done some recent estimated. And they estimate forty-eight inch, excuse me, forty-eight inch pipe at three hundred and seventy-five dollars per foot to replace. Um, comes in about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that is an estimate. Um, UAM, you will see attached, has provided some quotes for utility asset management. And that, the first quote there, option B, is a turnkey quote for completely spin casting the inside of the pipe. What they do is access some men in the pipe with equipment that lines the inside of the pipe with concrete. In other words, you're taking a steel pipe and you're making it a concrete pipe in place. Uh, that cost associated with this is a hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is cheaper than replacing. Um, a lot of that cost is with this is cleaning, which comes up to, in this math, twenty-eight thousand dollars or so. But I got her to go back and revisit these quotes. She revisited these quotes and provided me with a second quote, which included options C and D attached. Uh, option C is spin casting the pipe, the entire pipe, but either an outsourced contractor or the city would be responsible for cleaning and lucking the debris out of the pipe. Um, as that is a large project, this pipe enters into a stormwater pond out there. The pond would likely have to be pumped down by some pump feature and then washed out and the mud and debris would have to be pulled out by hand or washed out by hydrant flushing or some other means of vacuum excavation. Um, total for spin casting in this one hundred foot of pipe totals to eighty thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, as you see in option D there, I have, that is for invert only repairs. During the assessment, we determined that the top portion of the pipe or the crown of the pipe is in good shape. The parts that are failing, which is the inverted pipe, which is the bottom portion of the pipe, where water runs over consistently and it's just started to erode and rust away. Um, to come in and do the bottom half of the pipe, which is the invert end of the side walls, is forty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Estimates are twenty to twenty-five year life on this type of replacement. Um, I have reviewed the options here and due to cost, we recommend doing the bottom of the pipe, which is the invert. Um, a cleaning estimate is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I'm not sure how city staff does have the capability to do this, but it's expected to be at least a week's project. So I don't know what their current workload is to say if the city staff can do it or we would need to contract through UAM or another contractor to clean. Um, I do believe that if we clean, I would like for the city to consider cleaning first. Be prepared to immediately repair whatever we find. If we clean first and then assess it, then we may find that some of the pipe is still in good shape due to it was protected by a layer of sand and the erosion did not happen over the bottom of the pipe. But we won't know that until this cleaning. But if we're not prepared to go to work right after we clean, then silk could get back in the pipe and clean it again. So my proposal is for D and E, which would be a clean process, and then to prepare the inverts of the pipe. Would be my recommendation. Any questions?
Questions? And the project's going to be there more.
Yeah, I believe it's going to be there. Well, if I may.
Yes.
That's exactly why we brought this to you. This has been an ongoing problem. I know the mayor, maybe some of the others have gotten calls on this. It's a situation that's just going to get worse. There really is only one vendor, outside vendor to do this. There really is only one vendor, outside vendor to do this, which is, you know, the information we have here. And we just felt it'd be advantageous to bring this to you with the options that you decide tomorrow. You know, it's a voting deal, what you want to do. But like Mr. Jackson said, it is something that has to be done, and the more time that goes by, the worse the situation gets. I think they're already having some sinkhole problems and everything out there, as I understand. Is that right?
It's ugly out there. If you go out and look at it, I mean, it's pretty, it's a, it's a bad situation. We've gotta do something on it, there's no question about that. And you feel fairly confident that we just do the bottom part of it, then we've got probably twenty to twenty-five year life on what's remaining before we have to go dig the whole thing out?
From the experts I've talked to, which is Burke and Anita Klein, who is the owner, she feels confident that we should get twenty to twenty-five years out of it from their experience. I have not ever participated in one that we just did the bottom. We lined, we spin cast the whole portion of the last time we did one, which was a much shorter run. I think it did cost some twenty thousand dollars. But in this case, due to the, the lack of vacancy and being less intrusive, not going out and digging up somebody's yard or the right of way or in the easement, then trying to get the grass established back and that kind of thing, I think this is the best option.
Because I mean, you're talking about thirty thousand dollars difference if you spin cast the whole thing. Or it's double if you dig it up. That's correct. Any questions or concerns? And we'll bring this forward to you, Riley.
I think we need to do it, no doubt about it. After it was cleaned out, I'd love to have a little look at which way we want to do it. We want to do the whole pipe or just part of it?
Sure. I think it's definitely feasible. We're gonna get some camera work back. We're running camera in, we'll be able to just see a video of the inside, see the walls, the top, the bottom of the pipe, see how much, if there is any damage to the top. But visually, just looking, going at the pipe, we can't see any damage to the top portion. And with steel pipe, if there's not a rusting or eroding at the top, then it should continue to last.
Sorry, but the other thing is, is that there is no heavy traffic or anything.
It's a yard, yeah, so it's not a matter of vehicles and all, you know, but so...
Where's all the sand coming from?
I'm sure it's coming from, of course, the roads, running off of the roads. There's been multiple water leak repairs out there where water has run down and eroded the ground, still, that would imagine that's what...
If you get a sinkhole, something's eating it out underneath.
And then some dirt, the dirt is... It's coming from the bottom up and to, so you have erosion at the bottom of the pipe.
So this will eliminate the sinkhole, we can go back in and fill it over at the top.
Yes, the, the water's coming in at the bottom of the pipe, but it's allowing water to come beside the pipe and then come up that bottom again.
So we will vote on this tomorrow and decide whether we're gonna do D and E, is that what I understand?
Sure. Now, I would, I would recommend to move forward with D and E. If you would, if you would like to entertain something else this time, I can make other recommendations.
We'll have to vote on it, we'll have to be on, it's that right?
Right, but what I'd recommend is that you go, kind of following up on Riley's point, is that you go with UMA and they clean out the pipe. You run a check to see right of way. And then if it still seems to hold up, you know, maybe you go and say, okay, if it's okay, then we're gonna...
Go ahead.
Do the half.
Right.
If the condition of the pipe indicates it needs to be fully done, then do with the full.
Be eighty thousand.
Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah. We'll, we'll vote on that, to leave that to the experts in the field to tell us. I mean, that's the option. You know, if, if we do half, do half. If we can't do half, do the whole thing.
That's right. That's what your motion would be.
Is everybody okay with that? Anything else, Mr. Gilmore? As an expert in the field. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore, we appreciate it. We'll vote on that tomorrow night and get you moving forward with it. Item five is council number item. Mr. Jackson, anything for us?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Quick question regarding the air D and Bs from earlier. Do those, those also fall under hotel motel tax? Is that correct or am I...
If the city has an agreement with Fairgrounds.
Which we're working on right now. Thanks to Ms. Clark.
Mr. Brown, Grace? Mr. Allen? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. I have probably one of the most pressing important things you have ever had to decide in your whole career as elected official, short of deciding when Halloween was gonna be. Historically, on the lighting of the Christmas decorations in the city, it has been tied to when the parade is going to be. And I believe the parade is almost always the first Saturday in December, so the schedule is here according to that. As I'm sure all the shoppers are well aware of, this year Thanksgiving was late, pushed back, so there was a week's time. So public works, oh, and let me back up, with the number of decorations and everything we have, it takes public works probably about two, maybe three days just to, they're already up, but just to plug them up and get them going, okay? However, there have been concerns expressed, at least to the city manager's office, how come we don't have the Christmas lights on? They have mine, we want to rob and so on and so forth. But more importantly, goes back to what was talked about with the Black Friday and what's this Saturday? Small Business Saturday downtown. And so therefore, administration would like to recommend to council, if you have no objections, that we just make sure that all our Christmas lights are on by Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving Day, that's right. I realize that sounds, at least again to us older folks, it's kind of treasonous.
You're talking about next year.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, for next year.
Maybe you're talking about what we're gonna do this year.
No, 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 no. This, this year they're going on now and for the rest of this year.
So they'll be turned on in cycles this week?
Yeah, from the standpoint of they'll turn on as many as they can get one day and then they'll turn on whatever the rest of the month, the next day and then whatever until it's done.
I'm sorry, because I was confused, because I thought we were gonna turn them on Saturday night.
That's what I was thinking.
I was thinking it was the day after Thanksgiving they, they came...
Well, yes. The problem with the day after Thanksgiving, council members, is, is that's a holiday.
Right.
So you don't have anybody working unless you want to pay a bunch of overtime for that. And at least administration originally thought a week's time for the Christmas parade, that should be fine. Obviously, the manager was incorrect. But that's why I want to check and make sure if you are agreeable with it. That way, the lights are on, you know, they're set for the sale in downtown type of stuff and hopefully we'll negate some of the comments on this.
So you want to do them on the day after Thanksgiving or the day before?
No, I want them to start turning on the lights the Monday. The reason I'm saying that is, is that if we have Thanksgiving week, our employees are off, they're staying Friday. So if it takes three days and you want to have them on by that following Saturday, then you start that Monday before, the Tuesday before.
So you start turning on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Right, so they'll be on Thanksgiving and on Friday, after Thanksgiving, fabulous Saturday and overwhelming Friday, whatever the marketing thing is.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gilmore, for your suggestions. We appreciate that, but that sounds like that's a good idea to get it, get them up in Burton. So we'll start now and we'll start turning them on this year, tomorrow.
Yeah, Georgia Power goes rebate us for those extra days.
Because, you know, that's what we could have told everybody, we want to rob and has them on, but we're saving tax bills. If we can get them on as quickly as we can, we would appreciate it. If we're set and ready to go.
Well, I had to say, but another example about depending on how it varies on, on the calendar or anything, what's the ministerial association doing? Your yesterday, you know, and how often does that first Sunday be the first day of December?
But we did turn the tree on. The tree is on, so that was a very, that was a very good function. We'll be more engaged in it next year. I'm breathless, is there something else?
You don't know what an important decision it was that you don't just...
I understand. This is not the first time that we've had this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Mr. Smith?
Nothing, sir.
You don't have anything to follow after that?
No, sir. Lights were the big precedent there, we got it, got it figured out, we're good.
Thank you. Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Anything for us? Department head items, Ms. Harden, anything else?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Is it Young?
No.
What's the new name?
Bryant. Bryant.
Bryant, okay.
Close.
Why you start yelling?
I am young, but a lot of young.
I was gonna call you Ms. Myers, but I, well, no, I gotta get the new name, Ms. Bryant. Do you have anything else, Ms. Bryant?
Yes, Mayor and Council, just happy and excited to report that it was a record-breaking Small Business Saturday and Black Friday. So just a record-breaking weekend all around for downtown businesses at least. We had several downtown businesses break personal records of sales ever since opened or even just Small Business Saturday in general. And we also doubled, almost tripled the participation from our community as well. So we're just very excited about that, the momentum that we have downtown, like Promotions and Main Street Advisory Board is working really hard to ensure that the community is up to date with everything going on, and we have a lot of businesses and new businesses getting involved, so we're super excited. That's all.
Good, thank you. It was a good weekend down there.
Yes.
It was handled very well.
Just one thing going back on, on comments from the DDA, Ms. Harden. I do, I'm glad to hear it, it was really fabulous and everything. I also firmly believe those first Fridays contributed immensely to that, by giving that exposure for the downtown. You know, so every once in a while, you know, when you get to agree from some of the merchants about, you know, what's the value of that? I think this last weekend's a perfect example of why that type of stuff is good, on bringing those folks downtown.
No question about it. Ms. Harden, we just have to find those restaurants to keep everybody downtown after seven o'clock.
We're working on it.
I know that.
Hopefully in the next month or two, we can help a couple for you.
Good. I remember we were talking about one tonight, so that's wonderful. Mr. Worthington?
Nothing tonight.
Chief Parker?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, tomorrow during the council meeting, our, your city participants will be graduating, so we will call them up and give them a certificate as well as take a picture. So they're very excited about graduating and we've gotten a lot of good feedback about that. As far as Small Business Saturday, we've also got several positive media press coverage stories regarding that, also very good social media chatter about the city as well, so I'm glad to report that. Also, Ms. Anya Turpin wanted me to let you know that our city tree is up at the Welcome Center. It's the same tree that was down here with military themed and it's very pretty and it's already on our Facebook, if you like to go see a picture of it. Thank you.
I understand that Chief's got one up there too. Bernard Parker?
We won two years in a row where we're looking for number three.
You're gonna do the trifecta.
That's right.
Chief Lynn?
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Mr. Swan? Anything else?
No, sir.
Nothing. Ms. McMurray, anything else?
Nothing further.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Kim?
Nothing, sir.
Did I make sure that I got everybody tonight? Thank you for hearing, Mr. Fox, we appreciate the input and information you provided to us. If there's anything else right now, I will entertain a motion to go into the executive session for the recent personnel.
Go move.
No, I'm there, but say aye.
Aye.